Good morning, everybody. Appreciate y'all coming out on this beautiful day to listen to all the wisdom that comes from this pro family here. We'll start the meeting off, Councilman. Oliver will present our invocation and then we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Looks great. Family Father, we are so grateful to be able to gather together today. We are grateful for every day that you give us. We thank you for that. We ask you today, please impart your wisdom, your patience, and your peace in each of us here today as we endeavor to do your will and do what's right for the citizens of this wonderful city. We thank you for bringing us all together. We thank you for all that you do to protect us, and I ask that you continue to watch over every one of our citizens and visitors. Protect them and show them your beauty here. And I pray this in the glorious name of our Lord and Savior, our Christ Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the President of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our May twentieth council meeting. I'm sure you all have reviewed it in our council packet. I'll need a motion to approve these minutes. Thank you, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving these minutes signify with aye?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. May twentieth minutes are approved as presented. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye?
Aye.
All right, it was unanimous and our agenda is adopted as presented. All right, Mayor Earl and Council Marx is the next item and I'm just saying welcome back to all our visitors and our part-time residents. I think our city looks fantastic. I know the twelve thousand inches of rain has helped us, but our public works guys are doing a good job of keeping up with the grass and the culverts and the garden club has done a wonderful job with the flowers. Our entrance looks fantastic. I noticed it's the yard of the month from the garden club. Also, our welcome back celebration by the PLA was very well attended and they've already presented and two wonderful breakfasts to the public and those are also well attended. Councilman, do you have anything you would like to say at this time? Okay, all right, so now we're to the city manager report. Jason, if you'll please present the city manager report at this time.
I'm gonna step over here so that Al is not right here.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Council, good morning, everyone. As the mayor just said, days are getting longer, the temps are getting warmer. Our population is getting larger, so it's obviously summertime. We recently had the Pecobal Ford service cracks professionally redid, they let rate. Anybody that's been out there, you probably have noticed that there's a little bit of color deviation. Our technician has told us that over time that will blend in. They also provided us, or we purchased a little extra of that material. They showed some of our guys how to do that, so we'll be able to fix future cracks, but that's probably something that we'll have to be looking at when we rig it, just because of the extreme temperatures we have and the amount of play that it puts the world on the course. So anyway, but I'm glad to have that done and, you know, thank you, everybody who had to not be able to play for a couple of days while we had that done. Grass cutting, full swing, right, you know, the guys are cutting their right away in public spaces. Just a reminder or make folks aware that please watch out for our guys without the cutting. They're not only having to focus on what they're doing, but having to watch out for others. All the while they're on a noisy piece of equipment. We're steadily getting closer to Independence Day, which begins July the fifth. My understanding, Sherry knows that we've got a lot of volunteers that are stepping up. That's wonderful. That helps make it a great, a good event, a great event, and we are expecting the largest crowd ever. Also, just upcoming posts in very near future with times, location, et cetera. Finances, we should be tracking around forty-eight percent for this time of year. As you know, we run a calendar fiscal year about halfway through the year. We're a little over fifty percent, but I'm not too concerned right now. As I mentioned in previous meetings, we have a lot of big time, once-per-year expenditures that hit every year to kind of throw those things off, but we, as always, we continue to monitor our expenditures and right now we're doing pretty good. We are looking possibly going or continuing with Black Mountain software for the property tax module. As you may know, we use them for accounting. We've been using them for years. They do a great job. It's cloud-based, so we have that protection there as well as outstanding customer service. We use a different company now for our taxes, but we're looking to do some continuing string lining there. And we're also looking at some other options with them to include being able to email utility bills, so we're getting there. We'll be rolling that out here in the near future, so we'll be watching the future postings and notifications on that. Again, on budgets, we're already starting to look at the fiscal year 2026 budget. I've had conversations with our public works, our police. Jim, as we're already beginning that, and there'll be workshops and things like that forthcoming over the next few weeks and months. I'm pleased to say that we are in process of installing dash cams into our police cars and as well as GPS. As you, Chief Bombs can certainly attest, they have the body cam, but we're gonna, we're doing a partnership with Horizon that has a governmental program of these dash cams. It's gonna just be another protection for our officers on one of our police departments. So they will be getting installed very soon, so we're glad to have that and hopefully that will be well received. And there'll actually be two cameras, so the cameras will be able to project forward, so if they have somebody pulled over and also project inside the car, if they have somebody that's maybe detained or something, they're doing something in the cage, it'll capture that too. So anyway, I'm sure Councilman Michael B. will say we do have a P and Z meeting next Tuesday. It's an annexation request. We did send information to the county with their response, which is required, to see if they have any bona fide objection. I spoke with their planning staff. They are working to get their response to us. However, from speaking with the county administrator and the chairman of the board commissioners, I don't think they should have any reason to contest that, but we have received that. And that's just for...
Jason, would you give a little bit more detail about the annexation for our meeting participants? Oh, you were gonna do it?
Yeah, I'll reserve that meeting. I don't believe anybody, this point F Y, we'll have that meeting next week, that may probably be here. We've been working with our autodidic mixing mix and that, for me, that is, that's coming, very, coming together very soon. I should be getting some final information from her today, tomorrow, the latest. I mentioned to Ms. Fleming, our city clerk, we may have to call a special meeting next week for our work session for her to come in. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, we typically have to do a budget amendment, which is not uncommon. A lot of cities do that. And so there may be a special called meeting for that as well as a work session for her to come present the auto again, that's routine that's done every year. And so just then, let's see, that pretty much concludes my meeting. I'm there. And if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. If not, I will have a seat and let this meeting continue on.
Questions or comments, Council? Questions or comments from our meeting participants? Okay, Jason, if you'll introduce your department heads for their...
Okay. Jim, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Oliver stuff, no particularly rough, round of reason, but see, see, we're told this first and then we'll go to...
Well, mine's real brief, so that's the good news. Good morning, everybody. So in the month of May, I didn't have to issue any citations, so that's good news, but also in the month of May, we did, the judge fined someone $1,000 for starting work three times without permits. And, you know, I mean, three strikes, you're out. I mean, he paid the fine and so he'll be able to work in here again, but anyway, that's just to show you that we are enforcing the fines and the judge made that decision based on three incidences. Construction continues on forty homes under construction, twenty-sixty-eight Ridge Pole, the Jacobsons, seventy-one Evergreen. A lot of you have driven by that, the Kings. Six fifty West Sugar Bush, which is new construction. It's already, it's already under contract, even though it's not completed yet. And then Zero Knob Drive, they started framing this week. There was a hiatus for various reasons. I talked to the owner and he started again just yesterday. Two potential home construction contracts are pending, one for Saddleback Circle and possibly one for Ridge Pole. In May of 2025, this year, fifteen building permits and eight tree permits. May of 2024, there were sixteen building permits and four tree permits. So we're a little bit behind compared to last year. We've issued eighty-seven permits so far this year versus a hundred and six at the same time last year. But the good news is June is off to a big start and we're way ahead of last year. And again, I've mentioned in the past that last year we were just under four hundred permits, so things are really taking off as the seasonal folks come back. And a lot of them are coming in gangbusters, ready to ramp it. So that's it. Thank you.
Just want to let you know, you mentioned that the Evergreen house, seventy-one Evergreen, two days ago, Kathy and I were coming back from Clay, one Evergreen, and we could see a car backing up and going, well, he had a package, his Amazon four seventy-one Evergreen. Just interesting that the house is finished. It was, you know, wondering if it was for the contractors or...
Well, the contractor happens to be here, you know, on Monday. Was that for you?
It's lighting stuff that they're getting delivered for the house.
Okay.
And they're really good about leaving things up on the street instead of carrying them down to the house. I thought that was a interesting thing.
First I heard about it.
Not one thing I can do about that, but we've had several packages actually left up on the road. Most of them they carried out to the store, but yeah, they've got a lot of stuff and mainly it's plumbing fixtures and lighting fixtures.
We were trying to help, but seventy-one, I didn't think it had to be that house, but I thought odd that there's no residents there. Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake.
Chief Bombers?
Good morning. I just got back from the two-week training with Chief School, so that was very enlightening. All the instructors were either retired or very seasoned chiefs, so I've got all their contact information and they've also reached out anytime, you know, had questions or need advice with stuff. So that was, it was a real good eye-opening experience of everything from the liability that's on the department, the city to hard training practices. So it whole-scale, they do a really good class. I've got my numbers for May and I did, I went back and looked at May last year and compared them to this year. And just real quick, something like our accident total for this year, we've had thirteen accidents, reports required accidents. Last year, this time, we had twenty-six, so we've cut that in half. And my thinking, the reason is, we'll go to the, last year, we had three hundred and eighty traffic stops at this time, not all citations, I've happened to have citations and warnings, but that's almost down, well, it's down more than a hundred. We're at two hundred and fifteen traffic stops this year. So the enforcement of the speeding traffic laws has reduced our accidents by half. So, you know, that, we get a lot flack about work and traffic, a lot of people are writing tickets, but that is the goal list for the safety of the public, reducing the amount of accidents that we have. And the numbers don't lie. It's been cut in half in one year. So that was a good thing. And we're still up real good on our house checks, business checks. Three thousand, three hundred house checks done for the month, twenty-four hundred business checks, nine welfare checks. We patrol five thousand, nine hundred and eight miles so far for the year. I mean, there's a whole lot more numbers and anybody can have access to this if they want to go down and check them all. Oh, we're gonna start doing, we've, I've had, been approached by several people wanting to know about the new officers, so I've got what's here and we're gonna post a picture online with a little short bio of where they came from, what they've done in their career, so people can put faces to the names and they, they...
Sure.
And we'll keep going just in case there's other officers that's here on night shift that people just don't recognize, so they'll have their names and kind of their backgrounds. The dash cams is a great idea. It's just another tool in our belt, you know, for to cover for liability. It does make it easier to do a report when an officer will have access to that footage. He can go back and watch to do his reports, so everything's done accurately with the video. And I don't know if anybody's aware who Robert Peel is. Back in the eighteen hundreds, he's the, known as in law enforcement as being the father of mother day law enforcement. And one of his quotes just really hit home for me while, when I was reading about it. The quote is, "The police are the public and the public are the police." So, you know, we're all in this together and we're just tasked to keep everybody safe. But, yeah, I'm gonna actually get that printed out and put up in the police department. But yeah, that's all I got.
Oh, that's great. Oh, on the accidents, the thirteen accidents, are there certain areas that are heavy?
Two forty-six.
Oh, so it's, it's most of them are...
And I can break that down for you.
No, I'm just curious to see if, you know, if they were in town.
There are some, little fender benders that require reports, you know, without injuries and stuff, yeah. But the majority of injuries are gonna be out here due to speeding.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Something about, I could just add also, I know there was some, we had some questions from some citizens about trying to do something to recognize the police, similar to what we did with Public Works last month. We're thinking, and I talked to you about this, but in August, they had the National Night Out, which is kind of the liaison or interactive meeting with public police, and we're thinking about trying to do something during that week to honor the police department. So just informational people coming, but I will say this, Chief, he's been able to bring on some great part-time folks and I think things are going in great direction.
Do we have an idea of a date in August, Jim?
I can go get that out, but I think it's early in August. It's probably somewhere close to around, I think Purple Heart Day, which I believe is the seventh, but for those, we'd better, we never think of that too, believe me, but usually early in August.
Is that it? Did you want to talk about the dash cams or anything?
Just, just as I mentioned, that they will be getting installed here probably in the next couple, three weeks. We'll have to coordinate that. And again, I think it's just gonna be another tool to help Al and we're also gonna put one in the garbage truck also. We have, I think that's a great way to help track some things. We have, from time to time, we have issues where somebody say they had the trash out at a certain time and we go by and it's not, not that we want to be confrontational, but I think it'll be a good, a good tool there if we ever had the need it, not to enforce that, but other than that, it's okay. I don't want to allow Public Works to give their rewards. Mr. Sheldon, you wanna do that or you have number two over there, Mr. English? How you doing?
I'm doing well. A whole lot different from last month. We're still working on the grass. I had some canopy clearing, trying to get things ready for the Fourth of July events coming up. I've had a lot of trees brought to my attention, trees are the recent storms that we're getting popping up. Of course, people notice trees that are dead or dying. We say, please, by all means, if you see them, let us know and we'll see what we can do about getting them taken care of. Those are areas, as the mayor mentioned, the garden club is working on. Some of them are still in the process of being fixed and cleaned up, but I assure you, when they get done, they'll look nice and I'd like to thank them again. And some of the station nine members, I guess, probably two weeks ago, we had a tree down and two of them got to it before we got there and got it taken care of, so I'd like to give them a shout out. We've done, thank you. We've got a twenty-ten Toyota Challenger that we're looking about circling in the near future today.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of mileage. For Toyota, it's really not that bad, but it has a hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred forty miles on it. Just a long story short, every light in the house is on, on it. It's dangerous to drive. It's got rust on it.
I'm gonna sell that thing, so.
They're gonna wreck it, you know, man. Somebody can get a Toyota.
Well, it's a Toyota, Jerry.
That's, that's, that's the good thing with the Toyota.
Yeah.
We're looking to circle, see, and everyday work orders, we get them. The ladies in the office get them. They get them best, of course, we get slapped a time or two and during the week, but that's what part of it and that's where you get the thunder.
Slap, slap, who's there? Who's slapping you?
The ladies in the office, you know, but just reminding us of the work order. We get, we get quite a few of those coming up, but we're staying busy and God is doing well.
Thank you, Jerry. Comments? Questions?
I agree with what you just said, the guys are doing well.
I do too. The city's looking great. Thank you, Jerry. Mr. English?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So on the water side, we've, we've got the consumer conference report published and it's out on the website. If you want a paper copy of that, just stop by City Hall. If you got any questions or concerns about it, about some of the language on it, feel free to give me a call. I think my phone number's on it like three or four times, so or you can call City Hall and I'll get in contact with you there. The next thing I got is the leak detection. We've got the equipment now, the leak loggers. We have the leak loggers now. We had some training on that, some brief training. The guy that was doing the training, he had places that he needed to be that day, but we are scheduled for him to come back and do some more walkthrough with him on the training for the leak loggers. We have three of them out right now. One is, one is at McClure Lane, Ridge Pole intersection right there, down in the pit. We have one at the Big Rock, down on the valve, and then we have one on Cover Bridge. We're sort of running through a test of about two weeks right here and we're gonna put together some average numbers and, and some graphs and see what they look like. But just reading them out of the couple of days that we've had them in the ground so far, you can, you can see on the graph where it's quiet and then it'll spike up like somebody has got up and maybe got a glass of water or something like that through the mouth. So it's very, so it's very informational and how the way the graphs work. It's gonna take some time to learn about where we need to put them and, and stuff like that and...
Now, how does that sound? Help you detect leaks, Tony?
So it, it will probably be easier to show you than it would tell you, but there's a graph, right? So it counts like you got a two-hour period through the middle of the night, twelve to two is what we gotta set for right now. And in that time period, it'll, it'll graph the, the noise. So as you go along the graph, it'll, it'll be down here where it's real quiet and then you'll see a spike. And, you know, it'll give you a number of the loudness of the spike and then it'll go back down and then it'll be quiet for a while. So if we were to read the graph and it was all high, that means there's flow all the time. That, that means we need to look for, look for a leak, go to meter, meter, use our other leak detection equipment to maybe nail down where the water's going.
So you're just getting baseline right now.
Right, right, yeah. This, this, this equipment is, is really top of the line and it's gonna keep us from having to be out in the middle of the night physically listening, you know, to the valves, to the pressure reduction valves.
And you pull this up on your cell phone?
Well, it actually, the one that we, we bought come with a, like a carry device and it shows you the graph on there. You can plug it into the computer and get all that information off of it, but like I said, we're gonna have to have some more training on that side of it and we've got that scheduled up.
How many of these leak loggers?
We have, we have, we bought ten.
Ten, okay.
We have three in the ground right now.
What do you have to do to put them into the ground? Do you have to put them in case and in something?
Well, they sort of look like, I don't know, they're sort of small and they're round and they got an antenna sticking off of them, so all you, and they're magnetized, so all you gotta do is stick it to something metal and cover it up or whatever you need to do to keep people seeing it, stealing it.
So the lawnmowers aren't gonna...
That's correct. Yeah, they're, they're underground. Yeah, they're underground. So nobody, nobody, unless you know they're there, nobody.
Okay. That's great.
So we'll, we'll, that's probably gonna be, that's probably gonna be something we do two or three times per week is go by and read those loggers. It only takes just a minute. It's a drive-by read. And, you know, like I said, we'll, we'll get some average numbers to start with and go from there on maybe a better plan on where to put them. I think when I mentioned before, we're gonna talk with Rick Barrett and get his opinion on some things, because he's, you know, he knows the system just like we do. The next thing I got, we've mentioned, I think, maybe the last four or five council meetings, is the, is the pressure reduction valve rebuilds. We recently just rebuilt one right across from Old Lodge and it helped the pressure by seventy-five P S R. I know there's been some questions thrown out. Why do we do it? How come my pressure went down? Well, the answer is, we, we have to adjust that pressure to keep higher stuff from blowing up, to keep our pipes from busting. If we have a surge in pressure, it's gonna, you know, cause, cause us water leaks. It's gonna cause, you know, other fittings in the system to fail, just, just as a homeowner would, would do maintenance on their own pressure system valve. We gotta do so.
While he's speaking on some of that, that P R V that was replaced across from Old Lodge, we got the leak detection devices and stuff, but we had several leaks within a certain area. And Cody and some of the guys, like something going on, so they put him into, you know, thinking mode, as he always is. But anyway, that's the first one we went to and opened it up and it did not have a gauge, nothing on it. Decision was, let's, let's go ahead and change it. We've got it and see if it changes anything. Got down into it, Cody got down into it and was cleaning the valve around where he had to flush it out, where it's been in there so long. There was a rock in there that big in the bottom of that pressure reduction valve and it was keeping that valve from being able to do what it's supposed to do. in the bottom of that pressure reducing valve and it was keeping that valve from being able to do what it's supposed to do. That was just by, they had to miss them using their head, you know, there's something going on with it. But it's here, we need to put these two areas that check from there and it took care of it.
How many more of those do we have to replace, Tony?
We've replaced nine out of seventeen. So the next thing I got is wetting copper samples. This time we had to do twenty resident samples. Every one of those come back below the M C L, the maximum contaminable. And I will, I have the sample results and are going to hand deliver them this week to the homeowners.
Since one of those was my house. Thank you, Cody.
Cody, I, I go, go back to the leak loggers. What, what is, I mean, how sensitive are they? You said they could pick up somebody getting a drink of water in the middle of the night.
Yeah, so they're, they're actually very sensitive, which is, is a good thing. You can set it to where it's a little less sensitive, but a, a, as of right now, we want it to be sensitive to get our averages. And, and we'll go from there.
Are you seeing any period of time so far where there is no flow, like three A M?
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so the one, the one that is right there at the big rock going on the valve right there, there is zero flow and then you can literally see it like two thirty or, you know, one thirty in the morning. You can see where somebody's got a drink of water flushed to it. It's, it's amazing. No, it'd be Bruce. But, but one can see that flow and that's going to help us determine.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if, if, if there's flow at two thirty in the morning constantly, then that's trouble. Around eight, you know, a bigger city or something like that, I could see it. They might have some more struggles trying to find leaks. But here, most everybody in bed, not doing nothing at two o'clock in the morning.
We, we will not make any comments on that. Thank you. Good job. All right, I think we are, next part on our agenda is our committee reports. And I continue to thank all our citizen volunteers who give their time and expertise to be on our committees. Because it sure helps us do our job. So Bill, would you present the mayoral advisory committee report at this time?
Sure. We've, we've been working on a comprehensive emergency plan for the city. And, and I mean comprehensive, you know, depending on weather events, tornadoes, floods, wind damage, et cetera, brush fires, extended power outages, et cetera, et cetera. We've done a lot of work. We've had two meetings so far that included our mayoral committee, also our police chief, our fire chief, some other individuals. It got, it got put on the back burner a little bit when we had the wildfires scare because we're all busy there. But what came out of that, our mayor, with help of that committee, really did a good job and wrote an extensive evacuation plan and a command center plan run by the fire department and our police, et cetera. So that big part is done. I'm working to schedule another meeting next week, I believe, to get everybody back together, to start to pull back together some of the other documentation we need. Because at the end of the day, what we really want to have is that comprehensive plan in writing. We want to be able to publish it so that everybody here in Sky Valley can see it, can download it, et cetera. We want to have a checklist for each department posted. So depending on what the emergency is and the decision made by the mayor fire that off, you know, to, to start with, with those, to initiate those plans. We want to make sure it's, it's ready to go. We've got everything lined up. We've got a checklist by department of what we're going to do, a communication plan of how we get out to all of the citizens, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it, it's, it's going to be fairly comprehensive. It's taken a lot of work to pull that stuff together, but we've got a good group of people working on it. And, and we should have that pretty much ready to go here in the next thirty days or so would be my, my goal so that we can present that to the mayor and council for approval or comments. Because our job on the committee is to make recommendations, not actually, we, we can't enact anything, the council. So that's where we are with that and that's what we're working on.
Thank you, Bill. And I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing this. Any comments?
I'll just say, Madam Mayor, we were approached by G M A, Georgia Minnesota Association last week. They've been doing a series on preparedance for situations like we've had. And they've been focusing a lot on wildfires and hurricanes and storms. But they're going to, one of the, one of the weeks, we're going to be talking about things such as snow and ice. And with the uniqueness of Sky Valley being positioned, we have been asked to kind of help lead that discussion. That will be in July. I've already had a conversation with Mr. English on that. As you all know, the guys, when we, when we roll out and plow snow and round the roads and all that, it's almost like you get your practice in the game and do it so much. They pretty much know what to do, but we're actually in, in tandem with what's going on here. We're going to present something in that event, but that's something that all of the cities in Georgia partner with. And it's called Talk It Up Thursdays. It's primarily for the cities, however, once, as I understand, they do record it and after it's done, I'll definitely try to get a copy of that. We'll get that published if anybody wants to see that. So.
How are they dealing with all the emergencies or just the snow and ice?
Well, they've been talking about wildfires, different scenarios. But one of those weeks of this Talk It Up Thursday, they're going to be talking about snow and ice. And there's probably just a handful of cities such as, I'm sure, Plank, Blairsville, Iowa, et cetera, et cetera. But with our elevation, we're probably, as, as you all know, there's going to be snow anywhere in Georgia is probably going to fall in first. So, but we've been asked, as such, we've been asked to kind of be, be a lead to talk about that. So I just wanted to plug that.
Do you think that that could be a reference that we could use with Bill's work on that?
I'm sure. Mr. Presinsky, who is our rep, Pete Presinsky, should have actually reached out to us or reach out to me about it, but I think you might have actually been in the office when we got that call. They, they, they are a great resource that we, that.
Wouldn't hurt to ask if they got any.
Compare that to what we already.
Yeah, so anyway, just wanted to say that we have, I'm pleased and certainly it was a pleasant surprise to be recognized for what we do. And we asked to kind of be lead on that panel for that particular week. So just want to share that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Turner, would you present the special projects committee report at this time?
Yeah, the only thing we have right now, on June twelfth, we had our final Independence Day meeting to finalize all the events. So everything seems to be lining up. Again, that's going to be July fifth. And also during the discussion, somebody mentioned, I think it was Chuck Fink, that the flag at the lodge is raggedy. And Cody, I think you mentioned that you had fixed the land or alleyard or whatever it is. And is a flag, new flag up there or is that?
It's not. We're going to have to purchase one and, and we can put it up anytime.
But that's all I had for my committee.
Thank you. Comments or questions? We're looking forward to July the fifth. It's always going. Especially our new dump tank that we're going to have. All the council members are.
I volunteer to throw.
And the money, it's going to be a dollar per throw. And the money goes to the fire department. So.
We're going to get the chief in there. We can promote.
We should. You'll make some money for it.
Oh, not this chief, fire chief.
Did you find anything about the towels?
I have not had a chance. That was Thursday.
Yeah, I think they're available and you can get hundreds of them for maybe fifty bucks.
What do we get in hundreds of?
For the dump tank. When people come out, they're just paper disposable towels and people can dry off.
So we're not even going to give them real towels. We're going to give them.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Dan, would you now present the planning and zoning commission meetings that you adore?
I just adore, yes. What we have been working on the past several months is maybe way of amending our tree ordinance. We will be discussing that shortly in, in another segment of this meeting. What's coming up next week, as Jason alluded to, is we've got a request for an annexation. We've got a person who owns a lot that abuts Sky High Drive. He, other than that, he's landlocked and has requested that he be included as part of Sky Valley. Quite frankly, it doesn't make sense to me that he wasn't included when Sky Valley was originally incorporated. I don't know how that happened, probably the property owner at the time didn't want to. But, you know, he's looking to have access to the Sky Valley service, water, garbage, snow removal, et cetera. As I said, he, you know, he abuts Sky High Drive anyway. So it only makes sense that, that this be done. So that'll be next Tuesday at one o'clock.
Any comments or questions at this point? All right. Mr. Gordon, you are from our wonderful city marketing committee. Would you please do your report at this time?
I will. Thank you. Good morning, morning. Just to give a brief update, Doug Hollins, Earth and Love Flight, he's working on the several, probably I actually probably say this, this month of May, first one was the Georgia Gulf Trail Newsletter. This goes out to fifty thousand people and he has an article on, a very nice article about Sky Valley. The second one that he's just published was the Gulf Media, Gulf News, the May twenty-eighth issue. This goes out to seventy-five thousand people, talking about an article about Sky Valley. Doug is also working on media people. We know several more media people that will be visiting Sky Valley in the coming summer. One of the big things we're working on right now is our real estate program with Southern Gulf. And Southern Gulf, Larry and Lisa and Joy Johnson, if you remember that, they visited us earlier and they're going to be publishing a major, their summer edition. They've got the Southern Fairways that goes out to over fifty thousand people and they're going to be highlighting Sky Valley. It's very impressive, two or three pages. It's just going to say, here's one last year they had exploring North Jersey. So they're very involved. The company is out of Gulf Shores, Alabama. And one of the unique things we're looking at is working on real estate, how we can promote Sky Valley in the Gulf Shores area. And they're promoting, coming up with ideas and I'll promote Sky Valley and Gulf Shores, Alabama area, and then vice versa. Part of this is creating real estate ads in the area. We formed a committee about how we can, how we can promote real estate in terms of the marketing and one of the areas would be posting on our visitor website. So we have formed a committee and they've given some recommendations about what we can do and not do in terms of posting ads, real estate ads all over and open for people of Sky Valley and what they can put on our website. So that'll be coming up. Second thing to hear about is the Mountain Travel Magazine. I wanted to just say, here's a current ad, maybe you could push this up. Mountain Traveler Magazine, we have several publications. You can see it. This, this comes out, they have two editions. We've had this for the, over the years. And of course Sharon does, it does a wonderful job. This is a magazine that goes out, Mountain Traveler. Pretty good?
But I had it in the last.
Sharon does a very impressive job. Okay, it just shows you what it is. Looking like, they have work planned and very impressive. Sharon does an outstanding job. This, there'll be a second one going, she'll change it up to give you an idea of what we're doing. Part of the money that, thank you, Sharon. The other issue we got here, the committee just approved roadside signs. It's Sharon come up with this idea and large roadside signs, we're going on two forty-six. These signs will be eye catching and one of the show, give you an idea of what one looked like. There'll be one on golfing, hiking and so forth, and we're going to have four of them put up. And of course, the city is working on that and hopefully it'll be finished. What is the size of it going to be? Roughly eight feet tall?
Yeah.
Eight feet, pretty amazing and very beautiful. So we're going to, just going up two forty-six showing eye catching, hiking, not much said of it. Golfing and so forth. So it'll be four of them. So you'll be seeing it coming along, some of the advertising that's going on. Other area I want to talk about is time shares. Time shares now is part of us and they've been attending all of our meetings and very involved. I want to say one thing, I'm very pleased to say the workout area has been, has a new fitness, fitness bike, a rowing machine and three new treadmills. So they're trying to do things here in the committee. The floor in the workout area has been replaced and the painted area. Several condominiums are being updated with new paint, landscaping and decking. The goal is to have the units ready to be used as short term rentals. One of the things we're working with is upgrading it so we can bring in groups. Who would you want to visit Sky Valley or larger golf group? So they have a place to stay, short term rental would be perfect. They've always had issues, but they're working with us on it and they're trying to upgrade it. And hopefully we were going to have a committee will look at it later on and say, gee, this is something nice. So they're very much aware of what they need to do in terms of, you know, having updated units. Second thing I want to do is talk about why people buying Sky Valley. We're working on a survey and I want to show you just a little bit about it. This is a survey talking about, we get a better idea why people will buy in Sky Valley. And the survey is going out, it has gone out and they gave you an idea. Here are the questions here. And you can say a little bit about it. We'll be saying, I don't know if you can see it here. How long have you been property owner in Sky Valley? Give me example questions, what type of ownership you have in Sky Valley. So there'll be a series of questions going out and that has gone out and we'll give you a report on it later on, results of it. This will give us a better idea, how to respond, what the people want looking for in Sky Valley.
Looks like you got good responses too.
Yeah, yes. You can sing it out. We'll be having our meeting next week and then Sharon will be presenting it. So this is giving you an idea of what's going on. Yeah. Be proactive. Are people interested in helping? What do they, what, what do they like about Sky Valley? What do we got to do better to make it even a better place? So it's a combination of both ways. Any questions? That's it.
Fantastic report. Thank you, Gordon. Okay. I'm going to move on to the part of the agenda that's new business and we're going to consider the approval of the amendment to our current tree ordinance that will, this will be the first reading. We, in order for me, for us to approve an ordinance, we have to go through two readings. So this is not the vote. This is just the first reading and we will take comments. Jason, would you, do you want to present? While you're doing that, I want to commend our commission that's been working for months and months and months. And they have done a deep dive, years and years of research of other cities' tree ordinances. They've talked to professional arborists. They've been holding a. They've been holding a pile of public meetings where we have the citizenry come in, make suggestions or ask questions. So they're doing a lot of work on this and this is a very complicated issue. And will we have the perfect tree ordinance? Probably not, but it'll be a whole lot better. And so Jason?
I'm just going to re-read the initial paragraph as required. Again, as the mayor says, this is the first reading introduction. In ordinance to repeal Sky Valley ordinances twelve oh one and fourteen oh six. And to establish an ordinance for the protection of places of trees within the city of Sky Valley. So again, this is the first reading and I'm sure everybody has any questions they can give. But again, that is the and it's been available now for people to review.
Diane, do you need to add anything to that or?
Just that we tried to bring some clarity to the ordinances. Adopt something that, that is compatible with the firewise community that we are part of and have been for several years. So we're just trying to make something better than we have had and easier for building inspector and our, our city manager to deal with, so.
Any questions or comments from the council in reference to this first reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You know, I guess, reading through this and looking at what we have before. I mean, we have, we have basically two major objectives, right? One is maintaining the aesthetics, right? So whatever we do with the trees, improves aesthetics or views or but also protects the overall integrity of, of our environment here. The second thing is safety, right? Firewise, you mentioned.
Yes.
You know, and, and as, you know, probably people have learned if they didn't know the underbrush, we have fires and we have a risk of fire. And the proliferation of the underbrush is the fuel that really this fire that happened wasn't in the crowns of the trees, it was creeping along through the underbrush. And I understand you've talked to some professional foresters, right? And I, I understand theirs because I'm a forester, degree in forestry. And that, that safety piece is really, really important. And, and that's why, you know, in our ordinance, we have certain things to reduce that fuel, like dead trees or not, you know, removing stuff that's cut, not left on the side, et cetera, if it's.
What we're doing here is enabling people to comply with the guidelines of the firewise call it ordinance, it's not, but second, just each recommendation and clear underbrush and, and under storage trees and what have you within certain zones around the structure, right? Those guidelines are published, we've got brochures out front. And, you know, anybody wanting to comply with that, they do so, we're not requiring it. But enabling it.
We also are an official tree city, so that, that also plays, plays into all this also. What do you feel?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much. I mean, at, at, at the end of the day, the optional reading correctly is if I choose around my house to take the underbrush out.
Yeah.
Just to protect my house from the wildfire.
Yep.
But I, I need to get, is that, do I need a permit to do that?
You need a permit, again, for tree cutting. So trees are defined as being eight inches in diameter or greater.
Okay.
So those that are under that.
So a six inch bush, I can just take it down.
He's not going to bother you.
Mr. Plaid will.
So that's, but, but, that's, that's good. The rest is basically to protect the aesthetics and environment.
Okay. And we're trying, you know, we're trying to, to maintain a certain level of canopy. Rather than the old ordinance, the current ordinance, I should say. Enables a homeowner to clear twenty-five percent of the land outside the footprint of their house. Does not say twenty-five percent of the canopy or twenty-five percent of the number of trees. It doesn't say over what duration of time. So you build a house, you clear twenty-five percent beyond the footprint, you're done. The, the way the ordinance is written now, the amendments, we're going the other direction where you've got to maintain a certain level of canopy. So it recognizes the fact that if your trees have grown over the twenty years that you've lived in your house, you may have exceeded the required canopy and you are able to remove some of those trees.
So people can maintain their views over extended period of time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? All right, any comments or questions from the meeting participants and, and per our, per our charter, you have to state your name and address when you're recognized.
I'm sorry, Gordon Brand, yeah. Question I ask is in clear cutting, will that new tree yard, so you're looking up a mountain, you see no trees, is that essentially enough you're trying to avoid?
That's part of it, yes. It's part of maintaining canopy, yes.
Yes, sir.
Robert Smalley, one oh three Buttermilk Circle.
Yes, sir.
I asked Jim, and we tried to explain to him, but I'm a little bit dense. On section three A, we talk about the two options. And I understand and I've heard the discussion of the two options. What I don't follow is when it comes down to B three. B three says no property permitted for new development activity. And Jim explained to me that is new development activity. It may, may remove all existing trees. Shouldn't that say must comply with option one or option two? I mean, we can get near all trees, they can remove maybe fifty percent of the trees. So to me, if somebody didn't read three A and jump down B three, said, hmm, I'm going to keep these five trees over here, so I'm not going to move all the trees and submits a plan. That plan, I don't think is even going to be considered if they're just leaving a handful of trees. So it's the all existing trees that personally, I don't see why three Z would be because any developments already covered by A sentence two. All land development permits must apply one of the metrics. So whether it's new development, whether it's existing to properties already been previously partially developed. I think it's covered in sentence two of A and don't know, I think it's just confusing to talk about possibility of removing all existing trees.
It's not inconsistent with the others. You're also, you know, maybe it's a little bit redundant, but it's, it's not inconsistent with the rest of the ordinance, so.
Okay.
How would you, how would you think that would improve that progress? How would that, how would that improve it by taking it out?
Well, I think it's properly covered by must apply one of the metrics. Just say no property permitted for new development. All property permitted for new development must comply with option one or option two.
This is just an easier way of saying it. Again, it's, it's, it's not inconsistent, so I, I wouldn't see the need to remove it.
I mean, I think when we were talking about this in the PNC meeting, we just wanted to ensure that, I mean, specifically, Reese says all existing trees and, and, and as I've talked to Mr. Smalley, three A was talking about mostly existing and already existing construction. In other words, it's not a new development. So again, there's a little bit of redundancy there, but I think, and as you said, it, it, it kind of helps clarify those that I think are thinking on maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Rick Towns, one nineteen Buttermilk Circle. As, as a point of legacy, we, we bought the lot in nineteen eighty and built following year. So we've been out here quite a while. And I just want to clarify the point that we will continually be able to top trees. There's some confusion on, it, it states it here that, that you will be able to, but other hearsay says it's going to curtail that. I just want to make sure.
Stop listening to your face.
That's why I said hearsay. But to ensure that we'll still have the ability to, to top trees with proper permit.
That's right, permitting, as long as you're maintaining the correct percentage of canopy on your property. And, you know, it's possible that you might, and, and of course, you're topping a tree, so you, you're still maintaining some canopy there. So that isn't inconsistent with the ordinance.
Right.
You know, it's in cases where you might want to remove trees to maintain a view or someone, or something like that. It's possible you might get below that required canopy and you might have to replace those trees with something. It enables you to do it.
Yeah, the current required canopy now is how many feet?
Well, that's not, that's not feet, it's percentage. The way, the way the current ordinance is worded, once you remove twenty-five percent of the canopy, you're done. So this is.
Unless you replace it.
Well, you'd have to, yeah, you'd have to replace it. And then it really doesn't discuss that currently. But with the, with these amendments, you would be able to do that.
The short answer is yes, you may continue. It, it's not a mandatory. And, and when I come up to what, what you're about to cut. As it says on the tree permit application, we discourage topping. That doesn't mean you can't do it, it just depends on the, the species of tree. I mean, you don't want to top a pine tree, that's going to look like a telephone pole, plus it'll probably kill it. Whereas other trees, you can top it, but you have to be careful how you top it. And most of the tree contractors know what they're doing.
Sure.
So.
Reputable contractor.
We've, we've had that a number of times.
And you aren't going to be prevented from doing it.
That answered your question.
Thank you. But we go back to your, you know, basic areas, you told, what you were today.
Yeah. And take their names. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
David Rainey, lot seventeen Evergreen. Also, also a builder, built several, I think, eight or nine houses in the last thirty-four years out here. Not going to be anywhere near as negative as y'all probably expect on things, because I am, I am a tree hugger. I am a view lover. I actually prefer window views rather than tree views, than, rather than clear cuts. Clear cutting is already, already spoken against. We already had a ski slope up here. I grew up playing on it. We don't get the ski no more. But I did want to have a couple of points of order. There's a few of them, so I'll be here for a minute, but we can address one at a time of what. No specific order, because I've kind of been writing things out. But one, in the re, replanting zone, y'all note in there, everything has to be ten foot or bigger, two inches or bigger. A ten foot tree off over the side of a hundred foot fall over top of a sixty foot deep house is not going to be able to be installed. It's not something that can be done. Y'all won't allow the crane that would do it and the roads wouldn't promote them anyway. Logistically, that's an impossibility. Just wanted to throw that out there. A six or eight foot tree that you can pump down in the woods is something you can do. An actual semi-mature or adolescent tree that's already ten plus feet high. A, you can't source it locally, you have to go somewhere else to get it. And then B, once you do get it, you're going to have to, it, it's going to be several hundred pounds and, and you're going to have to put it over the house. And it's going to be something that I don't think that you could accomplish. But I just want to throw that out there. The other thing is, one, the tree requirement that they're, the definition of tree is actually being downgraded. The willy nilly, anybody can cut any tree, used to be eight inches, eighteen inches off the ground. Now it's eight inches, four and a half feet off the ground, which means that down there where it was, it's now a ten or eleven, twelve inch tree. So it's actually a, a bigger tree that you can cut without permission or permitting or whatnot. I don't know if that was the intent, but that's the reality of what's worded. And then if it's a twenty-four inch tree, it forks three feet off the ground and it's two sixteen inches, you can take. That's what's written. I just wanted to make sure that y'all, that y'all were aware of that. And then also with a hundred and thirty inches per acre, by my reading, and I'm not an arborist by any stretch of the imagination, but most of these lots are half acre lots. That means you, on a half acre lot, you have to leave sixty-five inches of trees. That's only eight, eight inch trees. The reality of it is, is I don't even know if it's not less stringent than it was until you get into the canopy, which is a whole nother discussion of qualifications and who determines what canopy is and who determines what forty-five percent is. Because the biggest problem that you have out here is most of the lots are half acre lots. Some are below the road, some are above it. But a modest two thousand square foot house with decks is going to be twenty-six, is going to be about twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred square foot of footprint. When you add the fifteen feet all the way around it, which is already, I'm sorry, seventy by eighty, it's going to be about sixty-four hundred foot of footprint, which is already fifteen percent of an acre, which is a third of your lot already, let alone the, the, the perimeter. Then you have a thirty-six hundred square foot home would be eight thousand square foot, which is already twenty percent of an acre. And you're talking about only a half acre lot, you're already at the forty-three percent range. If that's just your footprint. Then you throw in the septic, the septic field of a minimum of a thousand square foot and the repaired area plus the driveway. Forty, forty-five percent canopy is going to be an impossibility in, in a lot of cases, particularly those lots that are above the road where not only do you have to have a driveway, the EPD is already mandated that a lot of these half acre lots can't be built on because you can't get a septic system on them, because what used to be sixty-five foot of drain field is now two hundred and ninety foot of drain field. Plus you have to have a repair area. If you do that and have to, so a lot of the half acre lots are one hundred percent unbuildable by EPD standards or rock or whatever. But if you throw in the tree ordinance, I'd also be cautious that someone with a half acre lot above the road can deem that Sky Valley has made their lot unbuildable. And that conceivably could be could, could open up legal problems. It may not. I don't know the answer to that, certainly not a lawyer or an arborist. My lot's three acres. I don't have to worry about this tree ordinance. I can do whatever I want to, because I can leave stuff all over. But the houses that I build on are a lot of, I mean, I, I had some issues last year on a forty-six acre lot, which we did the drain field around below, but there was a hundred, there was fifty feet of trees over the left. I don't think that that would not be a non-issue, but I don't, didn't like being a part of it because I actually love trees. I'd rather look at an oak tree. I'll, I'll fight you to a safe pine tree, but, but I'll gladly, I'll gladly leave more oaks than, when given the opportunity, I'll leave more hardwoods than I want. I want Sky Valley to be gorgeous. I grew up, it's been a part of my life for all of my life. But some of this, when you start talking percentages, and I know for a fact that a half acre lot requires probably well over fifty percent of the lot to be developed, to build, if it's even buildable. The forty-five percent is going to be an impossible criteria to maintain. The sixty-five inches, no problem. Eight trees. Your buffer zone up the left side, up the right, left side of properties, if all you got to leave is. If all you got to leave is eight trees, you've already won. But, and the Evergreen house we were talking about earlier has a twenty-four inch pine down there. That's already a third of my tree allowance, if I didn't, if that was the criteria that was being used. But we need to, I like the re, rebuilding, planting trees on top of the drain field and on top of the areas that you've cleared, that maybe top out at fifteen, twenty feet, it's easy enough to do. Rhododendrons, a lot of trees you can get that have those, that meet those criterias. And they're native, semi-native. And, uh, but, but saying that you can't develop a lot, in my mind, is going to create, is going to create a legal problem that I don't think you want to open up, in my opinion. If, if, if this ordinance stops someone with a, turns a hundred thousand dollar lot into a seven thousand dollar tax burden, someone could make some, some claims about that.
Okay, so fundamentally, it's new construction is, is the issue with that.
That's all I really have a, have a dog in.
You, you yourself just outlined what we were talking about at the beginning of this. You can't create a perfect ordinance. If we had, what, we had three thousand lots in here, something like that, we'd have to have three thousand different ordinances. Not practical.
Oh, our best practices, wording things around best practices is always, when you, when you write percentages and square footage requirements, it's a slippery slope. That's all I'm, that's all I'm getting at.
How would you do it without doing percentages? If we said, if, if we sat here and said, you've got to have X number of trees on any given lot. It's the smaller lots that would, would have a problem. If we say you've got to have a percentage of canopy on any given lot, the smaller lots have a smaller percentage of canopy. It's the only way to.
Well, who decides between the A and B option? Because if it's only eight trees, what more forty-five percent?
The lot owner chooses. The lot owner chooses which, which way.
Okay, well, that, that answers.
States.
That's the, that's the biggest issue that I had with the forty-five percent opens up weirdnesses that I don't know if we, if one can get around. But eight trees, anybody can leave eight trees.
You know, if you, if you read it, it gives the homeowner or the lot owner the option.
It says or, not and or.
So you're right. The or being, yeah, but you, that would be the question, would you decide that? Do you and, and Jason decide that or does the landlord? I, and forty-five percent's a, a hard criteria to hold. That's, that's my point.
The point is that if you've got a small lot, forty-five percent is a small amount. And it's absolutely, the only way to.
I want to shorten the contractor that Sky Valley is encouraging development as far as, we're a single residential homes. We're not going to stifle any, anything. I mean, your house of Evergreen, I guess, listening to the way you explained it, technically it might not comply. I would not have stopped that from developing the way you did it, especially given the fact that the drain field that is. The exact size of the, of the acreage of that lot. But I know there were some complaints from some residents that too many trees were cut. But when we went down and measured and, and, you know, the, the health department's stipulations, you're in compliance, so we're not, we're not changing.
And I would just point out that what EPD is requiring has nothing to do with City of Sky Valley.
I agree. So EPD is making it a lot, making it a lot harder to build up here than, 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 than the city. I was just, if, if the order is determined by the city, that's a problem because forty-five percent can't be done. And if the order is determined by the, if, if you can choose which one you want to do, I don't think that, I don't think sixty, I don't think the hundred and thirty inches per acre is problematic at all if I'm reading it correctly.
You're reading it correctly.
So you know, I'm not there, it's not there as they get to see I thought it was. I actually want the trees.
Thank you, thank you. Good, good discussion. That's, that's what we want to hear. Anybody else? All right, we have had the first reading. At our next meeting, we will do the second reading and we will go from there. All right, now we need to consider a resolution to declare city property as surplus. And Jason, if you'll get up and discuss the resolution to declare this surplus with that wonderful truck that we're giving, we're putting.
You want to tell us again, what are you going to?
Does the truck go with the land?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Council, as you all know, we do try to be great students of the resources that we have. This truck, it was two thousand and ten Toyota Tundra, the Durango of two thousand and twenty, police interceptor vehicle or pursuit vehicle. As you all know, we called this for, point out, a couple of years ago, we did pass a resolution, it's more of a guideline on the police replacement policy, vehicle placement. That, the truck is fifteen years old. Engine runs good, oil drive works great. Actually has covered AC, but it's, it's, uh, it's just really gotten the point with the maintenance on it, things breaking on it. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's time to, to, to put it on the green pastures. The police vehicle is five years old, it's got seventy-seven thousand miles on it. They use a lot, these vehicles use a lot, they've been great vehicles, but it's time to surplus these. Obviously, I've had conversations with chief office, the public works. We feel like that we can deal with the rest of this budget here without these assets. Obviously, there'll be some discussions beginning to the twenty-sixth budget year about trying to replace these. They do need to go. We, y'all have surplus equipment in the past. We've had a lot of great success. We've got deals, which is one of the ways that by Georgia law, we can, we can get rid of these vehicles. And so the plan is, if council agreed to pay to surplus this access, two thousand and ten Toyota Tundra, two thousand and twenty Dodge Durango, we will put those on, build deals. Whatever we receive, obviously that will go with the general funds, land expenses. And then we'll have those conversations as we get into the twenty-sixth budget year about to replace those. So, but anyway, the question is, is, with this resolution is to give the city staff the ability to, to do what we're asking.
Questions or comments from the council? Okay. I will need to hear a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Second. Thank you, Dan. Any discussions? All in favor of approving this resolution signify with a aye. All right, it was unanimous. The resolution is declared. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, other business. Sorry, Ms. Turner, you didn't know you were going to be here for four hours, did you? She is here to present a presentation about the upper, Upper River Basin. River keepers, are we in your district?
No, ma'am, you are not. Thank you for noticing that.
Okay.
Part of my presentation. So, um, my name is Terry Turner. I'm the community resilience specialist with the Savannah River Keeper. For those of you that don't know, the River Keeper is very active in Reagan County and all up and down the basin. Our basin starts in North Carolina, comes through Reagan County and winds up the Atlantic Ocean. So it's a rather large basin. Now, as the Honorable Mayor pointed out, Sky Valley is not in the Savannah River Basin. But because our efforts are countywide, we are wanting to include y'all and have included y'all in some of the work that we are currently doing and close to do. Sky Valley is in the Little Tennessee Basin and we will be working with the River Keeper on coordinating our efforts, both in Sky Valley and part of Mountain Valley, which is also in the Little Tennessee Basin. So we have been, um, we've been active up and down the basin for a number of years. Our River Keeper, Tanya Bobatodamas, has been a River Keeper for fifteen years. Her son went to Toluah Falls School. She has an investment in the community. I live here. I live in the Lakemont Tiger area, have been here almost a year now, and I really like it here. And I want to see good things for the community. So, um, in that vein, in that effort, we have put in a three nineteen grant with Georgia EPA. And this, our sponsor is the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission. We've been working with Adam Fazell on this grant. And the grant does a number of things. First off, we are in the process of buying a model flood ordinance, which includes a model storm ordinance and a mo, and a model septic technical fence. Now, why would we need a model ordinance? Well, what we're looking for is consistency in the basin, consistency in the regulatory efforts in the basin, starting in Reagan County and going all the way to the Atlantic Ocean, so that bad players don't move in and cause problems either up or downstream of them. But obviously, y'all have some good ordinances. I've listened to that before. I've, I've looked on your website. I've, I, I'm aware of your water quality efforts. Y'all do a good job here, you really do. But we're looking again for consistency throughout the basin. This grant also includes something that I'm, I'm very intrigued by. One of the things we want to do is develop an app that captures all development related data in one place. So, Mr. Plyburn, when he's reviewing plans, and I didn't say it right that time. Plyburn, I'm sorry. Okay, you got it, you got it. So, Mr. Plyburn, when he's reviewing plans, they have to look for data in a number of places. We want to put this data all in one place, whether it be environmental sensitivities, whether properties in the floodplain or wetlands, whether the property is located on Brownsville. But we also want to do it for the average citizen. We want people to be able to pick up this device and learn about the property they either own or are planning on purchasing. When we went, when we went to Tiger, they said one of the things they'd like to see in the app is political jurisdictions. Because the mailing area for Tiger is a very large area, but the jurisdiction of Tiger is a mile from the town center in any direction. So they often get calls for stuff that's not within their jurisdiction. But, so that's the second component of this grant. The third component is to develop citizen scientists. Now, that's a really powerful command. For volunteers that are trained through the adopt a stream program to go out and test water lines, lakes, streams, creeks, rivers, to make sure that if you suspect something's going on there that's not advantageous to you, your children, your grandchildren swimming in that water body, you can test it and figure it out. Well, we have an app associated with that, those results are real time. And it will, our River Keeper, she needs to come up here and investigate something that might not be going quite right. We're, we will be working with communities through their flood ordinance to increase their regulatory standards and become a part of the community rating system, which will save the community's residents on their flood insurance. And we'll be working with communities to become more smart communities, which y'all are probably right on the verge of. Y'all don't have more smart yet. But y'all have a lot of the components within what you're already doing to become a more smart community. So we're here, we want help. Now, I want to caution you, you've never seen me put my hands out. We're not coming here asking for money. I want to make that very, very clear. What we are asking for is a relationship, is your involvement in what we're doing. We are going to develop a stakeholders committee or an advisory committee, whatever they decide to call themselves. And we're asking that one or more of your council members, you, Madam Mayor, we're asking for your participation on this advisory committee as we move forward. Because no one knows Sky Valley like y'all know Sky Valley. And so we want your participation in what we're doing and the how of what we're doing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for, for describing and declaring this honorable mission. As a city, we will be glad to put our, your information on our website. So in case anybody here, any of our citizens, I know we have several that would be very interested in participating on that council or whatever you call it. So they can, they can contact you and become part of this whole mission. That's, thank you very much, and we will do that. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
What's the bash?
Same as you get on.
It, it, it's that, it's that same age old pay that volunteers get.
Is it double what we make?
Yeah, probably. It, it could be, but it could be their problem.
Trust us, it is.
I sat on my, when, when, a number of years ago, I sat on my local planning commission for twenty years, so I understand y'all's pay.
Yes, thank you, Terry. Thank you very much. All right, now we're at the public forum and this is where anybody in our meeting participants can, can speak to the council over any burning issues. Of course, we're not going to have any formal action, but does anybody need to say anything? Okay, we're moving on. All right, next on our agenda is executive session. And the city council can choose to go into an executive session for matters involving real estate litigation or personnel. And we are going to call in the executive session at this meeting and it has to deal with real estate matters and personnel issues. No formal action will be taken during this time and we will need a motion to go off the record. Thank you, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Turner or Bruce, whichever you want to be called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now officially off the record and no. All right, we have returned from our executive session, so no formal action was taken during this session. I will need a motion for us to go back on the record.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Second? All right, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All right, we are officially back on the record in our last order of business. Mr. Allred, would you take care of that?
I would be happy to, ma'am. Mayor, having, having considered all of the items on our agenda, I would recommend that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we've got two, two seconds. All right, all in favor of adjournment, signify with aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.